And hand it over to Cindy R S A O to go through. Written submissions, verbal submissions. And any other points clarification. First, we're dealing with the proposed community plan by law twenty seven fifty two slash P plus D slash twenty five. Cindy?
Okay, I'm also going to have you referencing the. I'm also going to have you referencing the sheet that I just provided in writing. What we did was we compiled all of the feedback that we've we've gotten since the first reading. And Jenna's actually going to pull it up for us. And I will speak a little bit more to it in in detail with regard to the points of clarification. So that is every bit of feedback that we've gotten and you'll see. A summary of what the feedback is and then that last column is what we've done about that feedback. So for instance, if we start going through it. We have Karnagowski, for instance, he had questioned the car road zoning from industrial. And we felt that that was warranted, so we changed that on the map. In terms of that, so the next one was from McLeod. And the question was, why are we discouraging residential occupancies in the industrial area? And when we had this.
Can I just interject and ask if you can share that screen so we can we can see it online? Sorry, thank you.
Yeah. We didn't realize you wouldn't have been here. Or we would have sent it to you prior.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so when we discussed this with council, it was determined that residential in the industrial areas should actually be discouraged and while not encouraged, but let's say that. Primarily due to the industrial area operations, noise hazards. However, to accommodate the need for something like a caretaker suite, we have incorporated that and bolstered that a little bit more. So people can have in the industrial area a business, but they can also have a caretaker suite. So Anderson, it was more to do with active transportation and more. More wording to encourage more trails or people to upkeep trails. And to include bicycles and active transportation. So that was more editorial that we just again, just did some more word smithing around that. McCory, and this one actually was a really good, good point in terms of. Our bylaw didn't was very vague and ambiguous in terms of what the goals and responsibilities of the development officer was as well as the powers of the development officer. Further to that is the appeal process. If there's a development out there and somebody doesn't like that development. There wasn't really clear direction on how they could appeal that. So we again have just added made that a more robust and concise. Description of that process and took away some of that subjectivity and made more clear definitions. The Gwich'on Renewable Resource Board feedback was with regard to two comments there was regard to the industrial waste and having some wording in there to talk about reduce waste and hazardous materials on industrial land. And do some public education regarding using our waste receptacles. So if you see that there's waste next to a blue bin, don't put all your garbage next to the blue bin. Or if you do, then call the town and tell us to come pick it up, you know, that type of thing. So most of that, we we didn't do too much work on that because that is actually more to do with our derelict and unsightly property. Bylaw, so we will add some more in terms of that policy to that bylaw, which is pretty clear in terms of and what we can do about it. So if you want to scroll up there. So that's the other feedback. As you're all aware, there are some challenges with regard to the N E T A P Gwich'on Council. They have some feedback. And I've tried to split that feedback into what is relevant to the bylaw, meaning our zoning bylaw. And this is primarily the discretionary, we had identified in our zoning map and our zone. The discretionary use for the contaminated soil or waste within the town of Anubis boundaries. In particular, the fact that we had designated the site out by the satellite facilities as industrial rather than hindrance. Or if we were to use hinderment, it was discretionary use. We felt it was necessary to identify it as an industrial area. In recognition of the fact that there is historical. It's a historical landfill site, so we have to acknowledge that through our zoning. We also have that caveat that regardless of whether we have zoned it that way, because it is discretionary. We have our own development processes where if people want to appeal council's decision and council so chooses to have something out there. There is an appeal process that the community can go through. Secondly, if it is with regard to a waste disposal site. The Gwich'on Land and Water Board also has their feedback process and their appeal process as well before they give a license. So there are mechanisms in place. To allow somebody to dispute that. But we felt it was necessary to put it within that zone. Finally, the 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 rest are more zoning changes because when we looked at the use of the, if you scroll down, if we look at the use, it was more to do with properties that there is an existing occupancy on. So those are more reflective, the zone is more reflective of what is actually there now. So it kind of catches up if you think over the years, how many discretionary uses or how many bylaw changes we've had to do because people have asked for those changes. So this kind of encapsulates all of that. And that's where some of that feedback comes from, if you want to keep on going. Next is with regards to the community plan itself rather than the zoning bylaw. And this again is from the N E T A P Gwich'on Council in reference to the development of a leadership council. And in our community plan, we had identified that we would encourage and foster that leadership council. They do have some concerns with that. We wanted that point of clarification that the council and the representatives of council are not there as government to government, they are not there as decision making. They are there to share resources and to collectively come up with ideas and support each other to make the community better. So there's nothing in that leadership council that would have any decision making impact with regard to that or any relevance to economic development or anything like that. So that is how we have, how we we have responded to that particular concern. The other concern that N G C had identified was issues with language used in the draft, including a lack of acknowledgement concerning rights of Gwich'on. Pursuant to the Gwich'on Comprehensive Land Claim Agreement. And if you look at the summary of the comparison from two thousand and fifteen to the one that was done in two thousand and twenty three, to the one that we are now presenting to you. The latest version of the community plan has broadened to reflect Gwich'on and Inuit culture, inclusivity, economic reliance and community wellness, as well as cultural acknowledgement and an inclusive vision. So again, the the administration has identified that we have actually broadened that concern. The next component, and you'll see these dates here, these are all written submissions. From N G C as well as our response to their concerns. One is the interpretation of the Conference of Land Claim Agreements, section twenty two, two, three, which is the the town. The land claim agreement does not impede the town's ability for community planning, political development and that type of thing. So there, that is already addressed in the land claim and the interpretation of it. The other concern that they had was the interpretation of what meaningful consultation and the assertion, the assertion that there was a lack of distinct efforts to consult with N E T A P as well as Gwich'on. In the development of the community plan and zoning bylaw. The third point that they had concerned was that there wasn't a the development of an appropriate means or method for the consultation. If you just want to scroll up a little bit there, Jenna. There we go. Nor did we allow sufficient time. Also, some of those letters were asking for extensions as well as a proposed protocol that would restart the entire community planning process. And if you look at our comment to the right hand side, we believe that reasonable attempts were made regarding consultation and that the time periods that we provided were ample opportunity for consultation and feedback. And that is why we are presenting the community plan to move forward. Finally, the rest is more editorial or grammatical. And adding some more definitions to it, and that's the remainder of the document that I provided for you. So that is primarily the written submissions. Either in favor or opposed to both the community plan as well as the zoning bylaw. So if we are referencing that in our public hearing, this is the document that we will be referencing. In terms of written submissions for the proposed community plan in favor. We have a letter from I R C that supports the community plan and the consultation process that we went through. And in terms of any verbal submissions, there's nobody in the room that would have done a verbal submission. Is there anybody in the room who would like to propose or support our community plan verbally? I see none. The presentation opposed, the written submission, I've already reviewed in that document, the N E T A P Gwich'on Council's opposition to the zone, or sorry, the community plan. And explained our rationale for why we are moving it forward. And if there is anybody in the room for any verbal submissions opposed to the community plan. I see none. Any other points of clarification? I've already described in that document for you. Okay. With regard to the proposed community, sorry, proposed zoning bylaw. We have one written submission, again, the letter from I R C that supports the process and the zoning bylaw. We, is there anybody in the room that has any verbal submission for support of our zoning bylaw? I see none. The presentation of the opposed to our zoning bylaw. The written submission, again, as I illustrated in that document, was the N E T A P Gwich'on Council. Their concern with regard to the landfill site designation and zoning out near the satellite facility, I've already described our response to that. And is there any verbal submissions for opposition to our zoning bylaw? I see none. Again, I've already provided the points of clarification and comments. Previously.
Good, thanks Cindy. With that, we will adjourn, we don't need a motion there.
That's that's a motion.
It's a motion, oh, okay. We don't need a motion for adjourning the public hearing. Moved by Councilman Wayman, second by Councilor Lemieux. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. That ends the public hearing on the community plan and zoning bylaw. Now we'll go to the Town of Anubis regular council meeting. I'd just like to call that to order. And I do want to identify that the Town of Anubis is within the Gwich'on settlement area. Adjacent to the Inuit settlement area, home to the Gwich'on, the Inuit, other indigenous people from throughout Canada. And other people from throughout Canada and the world, and all of that makes Anubis a very diverse and a great place to live. Moving on, item number two, the adoption of the agenda for tonight's meeting, moved by Councilor Lemieux, second by Councilor Gillis. Any further additions, questions on the agenda? All those in favor? Motion carried. Item number three, declaration of a conflict of interest or pecuniary interest with any of the agenda items. So you're not in plane? From the people online, councillors online. Item number four, delegation presentations and petitions. And we have the R C M P report and we've got Staff Sergeant Chris Wolden. Chris, if you want to come on up and give us your part, that would be great.
Thank you. So our over report here. Significant occurrences, unfortunately, there was a femicide, a homicide last month that we were called to respond to. But unfortunately, it was a case, we believe, domestic violence that that ended in the victim's death. Fortunately, we were able to catch apprehended suspect on scene. He's been charged with second degree murder. So we had our major crimes unit and our ident units were up as well, helping with that investigation. And yeah, good to get some justice for the victim and have somebody charged there real quick. Unfortunately, another two arsons in the community then related to the drug trade, we believe. We had an aggravated assault. And two sudden deaths. I know we we spoke about that, Mr. Mayor, those are deaths that aren't expected, that the R C P are called to attend to investigate. Another investigation for distribution of intimate images, I know we spoke about that last, that was involving a youth last month, this month. It was not, but still a concerning trend. We investigated damage to the Gwich'on Tribal Council sign on the I T H. And helped out with the Canadian Border Services Agency and investigation into some fraud and a residency application in in the region. And also the the Bebo gang graffiti. We do have some leads on that, which is is good. But just so council is aware, Bebo Blood In Blood Out is the acronym for that. And there's a, it is a real gang that's in Vancouver, they're based out of. There's no reason to believe they have active members here right now. However, we do know that the gangs target youth and sometimes one of their first things is property crimes like this. So we are taking it seriously and thankful for the town and the community's support and reporting on on that type of activity. One thing to note, a lot of businesses around town have cameras. But they're not working very well. They either aren't capturing video at all, or some businesses don't know how to recall footage of it. So as far as an investigational tool, they're they're not very useful when they're not working properly. So we had some messaging out to ask people to check that and you know, look at the the binders and see how they they can operate that better. Just to keep everybody safer and have that evidence. Majority of our cost to service continued to be alcohol related. And yeah, we we did do nine liquor seizures last month. And we had our territorial crime reduction unit up to to help curb some of the the drug trade, the alcohol abuse in town. They're based out of Yellinay and specialize in in that type of work. So we asked them to come up and help and they did, and we'll continue to to ask for their support too. Did a lot of meetings with some of our partner agencies, active with housing at the school, mental health advocacy working group. Victim services, met with the owner of the Mad Trapper to discuss, you know, crime reduction strategies from that location. We met with the Canadian Armed Forces to discuss their northern operational support hub, how the different infrastructure they're proposing to build could aid in R C P operations in the area. So it was good to have that discussion. And we also met with C S S and to discuss some joint clients and information sharing because they're a transient community here in Anubis and they have their their eyes on some people here. And so it's good to have the partnership. Did another three check stops last month, caught an impaired driver. Very active in minor hockey, coaching judo. And I know we're active with playing rec hockey and the can skate. And Mr. Mayor, with the remiss, I didn't say that it's a good thing we're playing here in Anubis because that move you pulled on the your breakaway there was probably illegal in other parts of the country. Good for you.
I also would note that the nineteen year old R C M P playing is is probably a misnomer on the can skate. He's pretty good.
Yeah, the can skate is not, is only half the name for for some of us, including myself. It's a lot of fun. So also into the school delivering some presentations on online safety and consent. I think that's most really important for that demographic. Lot of community events as well, mentioned the the minor hockey and some of our meetings there, we've had. Another important one we had with the school was on lockdowns and clarifying some reporting procedures with the teachers who are privy to some information on how to protect both the youth involved themselves. But how they they can seek help in a safe manner in those situations. The again, the the thing that's popping up to me a lot on the the statistics is the prisoner held, we're still two hundred and seventy six lower than than previous year to date. And I think that's just more use of the the shelters that are available here in in Anubis than the shelter staff. I know they're very accommodating and very helpful. Housing people that that need a safe place to go. And that aren't necessarily being criminals and don't don't need to be jailed. But they need to be kept safe and it's good that they're available to do that. Doing well, thirteen of sixteen positions filled. I know across the the territory, I believe, we're at about twenty two percent vacancy. So Anubis is is fairly strong in that regard compared to other R C P detachments. And I believe it's because, as you say, Anubis is a great place to live and it's attractive for R C P members and it shows. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from council, questions, comments? Councilor Lemieux?
Is it like worthwhile? Or do you have plans to maybe go and check in with some of those businesses that have cameras and maybe go over proper mounting? Like make sure that they do get familiar with retrieving that data and that sort of thing to help you guys out?
Hundred percent, yeah, we've we've had that discussion with with a lot of the local businesses.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? Chris, one question I had is with the officers that are on duty or on patrol. Does that cover a twenty four hour period or is there a period in there where they're basically on call?
There is a period where members are on call for emergencies.
Right.
And that that depends on the day and staffing levels. Sometimes we do have twenty four hour coverage. Sometimes there are short periods of on call.
Okay. Well, great. No further questions? Thanks again, great report and we certainly appreciate all the work the R C M P are doing and we know that they're busy, but it's it's also great to see them out. I saw plenty of them out, certainly at the Remembrance Day service, those of you in the red surge and also I think some of the officers that were on duty then. But also at the hockey tournament on the weekend, lots of officers in plain clothes and and uniformed out. So I think that's a great way to meet the kids and get familiar and the the youth to get familiar with the officers also. So great work.
Well, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just have one more more minute. I just wanted to recognize Councilman Wayman that during the airport shooting incident, he was he was very helpful with the R C P response that he volunteered his truck and communication services, put himself in harm's way. And was a very big asset to our response. And I just wanted to recognize him in front of this setting and a little token of appreciation for you. It's not mine, where is that?
It's your deputy bag there. Hey, thanks again.
The wonder of, thanks, the wonder of technology and star, I did.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna keep moving. Item number five, public question period. Think anyone's got any questions for us? Item number six, adoption of the minutes from the October twentieth, twenty second meeting. Moved by Councilor Gillis, second by Councilor Parrott. Any further discussion, questions, corrections? I mean, all of them favor? Motion carried. And we went through the action items on Monday, nothing further? No. Item number eight, new business, request for council decision. N W T Association of Communities delegation. What we've done on that, we booked the rooms already in Yellinay, so for those, I think everyone was here as well as the people online were here. Think about whether it's the end of February, February twenty. You leave here on the twenty fifth, the
Return is the
First, first of March, yeah. So it would be at the N W P A C A G M in Yellinay. So there's basically the twenty sixth, twenty seventh, twenty eighth, and then travel on either side of that. So we can either take one councillor, depending on the interest, or we can take two councillors and it's it is very informative and it's a interesting way to see all of the communities within the Northwest Territories. So anyway, we don't need to make a decision on that tonight. Check your schedules and then let Jenna know if you have an interest and then we'll firm that up before the end of the year. Okay. Eight three, request for council decision. Conditional use permit for forty five Bonaplo. Get this on the forum, moved by Councilor Gillis, second by Councilor Lemieux. Any further discussion on this? This is the dental office conditional use for that for that area. Councilman Wayman?
How long is the conditional use going to be? I know we need a dentist office, but how long?
Well, the conditional use means that council approves that can that use in that facility and that's it's for as long as the facility is there. There's no time period on it, it just on the zoning, it means that here's the allowable uses and then these are the conditional uses that have to come to council for approval. Yeah. I think because the is I'm not sure, but is that commercial zoning?
Maybe.
Peter, do you know what? What that was conditional under one zoning?
This case is, I'm glad you asked, this is actually a great case of why I'm looking forward to the new zoning bylaw because there were some issues with the current zoning bylaw that made this kind of complicated. It's technically an R two zone. Which and one of the conditional uses is land uses that are considered consistent by council with R two. And I, you know, dental clinics are very common in residential areas, especially medium density residential areas, but the term dental clinic or medical clinic or professional services is not actually defined in the current zoning bylaw, but although the term is used as a land use under the general commercial zone. So I had in your, in the R F T C report, you'll see some legalese. How I had to work through that and another issue to show that the the dental clinic is consistent with the current zoning bylaw, although it's not as clear and explicit as would be ideal. Those kinds of issues have been very carefully very carefully avoided in the news, proposed new zoning bylaw where every land use that is listed is does have a clear definition. Where every land use that is listed is, does have a clear definition.
Great, thanks Peter. Any further questions, comments on eight-three? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Sorry, could we go back to eight-two, because there is a motion to approve for the NWTMC for attendance?
No, eight, that was eight-one-one.
I'm sorry, eight-one, yes, for attendance, like there's an actual motion, or do you just wanna defer that till?
No, we'll defer that so that people have time to think about it, because I I don't know that we've had uh. Time to think about that, and as long as we've booked the rooms, we've got time in to book everything else, so. Let's say by by our next council meeting, if people can decide whether they have the time to go or not, or the the time or the interest. Let Jenna know. Okay. Eight-four, request for council decision, twenty-twenty-five dash one oh five, donation of space for the Aurora Research Institute. For the Geoscience Day or GeoDay. Uh let's get this on the table, move by Councillor Wayman, second by Councillor Parrot. Any further discussion, questions on this, we do have a couple reps from ARI here tonight to answer any questions. Councillor Parrot?
I did previously um indicate a question around the venue use, I know that in the past, the venues, I think, were either the. Aurora Research Institute on the first floor, um I'm I'm not sure, maybe one year, also the school. Um so it may be an explanation as to why the the event should be moved to the complex. Uh.
Come on down or just press the button?
Hi, thanks for your question and for consideration for the donation. Uh I'm Anita Mohammed, I'm a GS tech at the Aurora Research Institute, um and we do GeoWeek events. Uh we try to do it annually, and it's been expanding every year. I think initially, it was held in two thousand, when it first started, it was held in two thousand and eighteen at the Aurora College, and it's expanded since. With more um local community organizations being involved, as well as uh external organizations being involved. So this year, we have a college in North coming up, we also have a giant floor map that we realize we need more space for. So the year, we didn't do it last year, but in two thousand and twenty-three, we rented the MSC for that space. And we take out the format that sits in the middle, and then we have all the booths on the side, uh so. We were hoping to use that space again, because it worked really well the first time.
Good point, thank you.
Thanks.
Any further questions, comments?
We also have a floor map, if you guys wanna take a look at it.
Sorry?
Uh the potential use of the space for the the MSC with the booths and then the map inside.
Okay. Other comments, questions, all those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, thanks for coming out.
Thanks.
Bylaws. Nine-one, request for council decision, twenty-twenty-five dash zero-nine-eight. Bylaw twenty-seven fifty-two, community plan bylaw, this is the second reading. For this bylaw. Let me just see. We think. Okay.
So your two options would be to approve it. Without, uh as it stands right now, as it was presented to you? Or if the second option would be if there's any other revisions you wanted to make? Yeah.
So yes, perhaps, maybe the question before we get the motion that I can read out. Are there any further changes that council wants to make based on written submissions? There weren't over verbal submissions tonight, um or or aids? Because the copy you would have seen would be the latest version, including all of those pop, all of those changes. Not, um Deputy Mayor Barilak, Councillor Merrill, any further changes? Needed to the last version of the community plan that you would have seen and received?
I don't see any additional changes, thanks.
Yeah, no, none for me either.
Okay, so then the motion will be. Be resolved that the Town of Anubek Council hereby give second reading to the bylaw. Twenty-seven fifty-two slash P plus D slash twenty-five, the Town of Anubek Community Plan bylaw. Move by. Councillor Parrot, second by Councillor Wayman. Any further discussion needed on this community? The latest draft of the community plan? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Good job, only been since, I think, twenty-twenty-one, that we've been working on this, so it's good to see it. Going. Yeah, that's the community plan. Next, we're doing the second reading of bylaw twenty-seven fifty-three slash P plus D slash twenty-five. Town of Anubek zoning bylaw. And again, we have the same options, are there any further changes in the zoning bylaw? See no changes from the latest edition that you would have received, so. Be resolved that the Town, Anubek Town Council hereby give second reading to bylaw. Twenty-seven fifty-three slash P plus D slash twenty-five, Town of Anubek zoning bylaw. Move by. Councillor Wayman, second by Councillor Lemieux. Any further discussion on the zoning bylaw? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Motion carried.
I'll just make, I'll stay home.
Sure.
So now that it is in second reading, it now goes to the minister, it's a foreign ministerial review, they do their own consultation. And then, and then they will, uh if if approved, they will send it back to us, I anticipate. The new year, by the time they they have their consultations and that type of thing, and I have to say, uh kudos to our development officer. Peter Schultz, it was a Herculean task to get all of those edits, and I can't uh say enough about Jenna's support as well. So thank you for seeing this through, Jeff.
Thank you very much, everyone, um everyone that was involved was uh really very supportive, and we got this through. I, from the day-to-day development office position, I'm looking forward to the new zoning bylaw being enacted, because it it's a simpler zoning bylaw. It's more suited to the community, it's doesn't have any of those. Works of the previous zoning bylaw, um and I believe it will serve the community very well.
Thank you, Peter, a lot of work, but I think well worth it, and that brings us into twenty-twenty-five, having that new bylaw, so. A lot of updating on all fronts and and making things, I think, more. More efficient and more workable for the community, so good job, everyone. Item nine-three, request for council decision, twenty-twenty-five dash one oh three, bylaw twenty-seven fifty-nine. I'm in the solid waste collection bylaw, this is um, let's just get this on the table, move by. Councillor Wayman, second by Councillor Lemieux. This is basically putting in um some definitions on um solid waste and where it's coming from, just. Better clarification, so that uh it's it's easier to enforce that bylaw. Any for, this is the third reading, by the way, any further questions, comments needed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh we don't have departmental updates, uh information items, I gave an update to the uh Arctic. Secure, uh from the Arctic Security Working Group, multipurpose infrastructure, there there were five items, and I remembered what the other item was afterwards. And that was uh DND, uh they'll be looking at hiring um or contracting for work camps. But they'll also probably bring in some of theirs, and the discussion was, could some of these work camps be designed? So that they're housing afterwards, so that's what the potential fifth one would be. And DND will be in discussion about all of those probably over the next certain years. Um item number twelve. Council concerns, any further council concerns on any of the, on any items? Hopefully, we're able to address uh Councillor Wayman's concerns on the safety of uh some of the snow clearing and and get some of our. Peace officers out there assisting with that, and get the word out to, don't go where the equipment is. Um we don't have no other further concerns, we don't have any in-camera items, so motion to adjourn. Move by Councillor Lemieux. Thanks, everyone, thanks for coming out.
Peter.
Oh, good evening, everybody.
Oh, no, uh Peter, he's part of.